Alright folks, I'm gonna try something new and exciting and different. I'm gonna try to do a video of a study session. Alright, so this is, let's scroll down here a little bit so you can see it maybe. I don't know if you can see it, but it says, "Test 3." Did you see the error I got on that? So I'll do that again for it, "Test 3." So this is the test on valuation. How to value companies and stocks using multiples, okay? And so, we're gonna use a real company, not transportation trucking company. And we've got the income statement here, way over here. We've got the balance sheet. And we're really not gonna use the balance sheet for this particular example. But I wanna go through and video this for you so you can have it as a reference. So let's scroll down a little bit and let's get to some of the questions. So on the exam, I'm going to provide information for you. I'm gonna provide you these financial statements. And then, I'm going to walk you through the process of doing a valuation. Multiples, forecasting the fundamentals and forecasting the multiples. And then multiplying the forecast fundamental by the forecast multiple to get your value. So let's start this process of gathering the information we need to do evaluation. What is a stock worth? What is a fair price to pay for a stock or for a company, okay? So, let's start by gathering the fundamentals, okay? And so, let's compute earnings per share for the last three years. So we've got, uh, let's go ahead and we'll just put this here, 2012. Hopefully you can read that. And 2011 and 2010. And I know you can't see me really well, cuz I've got the light turned off. So this shows up better for you. So you don't need to see my handsome face, you just need to hear my terrific voice. Alright, so let's calculate earnings per share. So where are we gonna go to get earnings per share? So we're gonna go up in the income statement. And we're gonna go up to net income, okay? And we're gonna put net income in the numerator. And we're gonna put the number of shares in the denominator to get earnings per share. So let's scroll back up and let's do some earnings per share, okay? And so, we've got 64, 117 divided by 80,000. Okay, so, let me, what did I do with my calculator? Where did I set my calculator? I moved it back here. Oh, it's way back here, here it is. It's dark in here, I can't see anything. So we got 80,000. So there's your formula. Net income divided by the number of shares. So let's go ahead and calculate that. Get this calculator cleared out. 64, 117 divided by 80,000. And we get 80 cents. So let's go ahead and erase that and put dollar sign, point. So that's 80 cents. So we're gonna do it again up here. For 2011, we got 60,000, 248 divided by 81,000. Okay? Net income, way up here, partially cut off, divided by the number of shares. And so, let's do that calculation. Clear this calculator out. 6248 divided by 81,000. And we have 74 cents. Okay? And then we have 2010, which is 59072 is our net income. Divided by 82,000. So one thing we see going on here is the number of shares goes from 82 to 81 to 80. Okay, so we see that. So what's our earnings per share? 59072 divided by 82,000. And we have 72 cents. So that's where that, these numbers come from. Alright, now let's do the SGR. Now, grown, 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 everybody hates the SGR. And you know, I just wanna do the SGR for one year. Let's just do the SGR for one year, let's make it easy. So let's find the retention ratio. Remember that, what the retention ratio is? It's net income minus dividends divided by net income, okay? And/or, it's earnings per share minus dividends per share divided by earnings per share. Alright, so what do we have here? We've got earnings per share and we have dividends per share. So let's, let's use this one. So let's find our retention ratio. Alright, so what are we trying to do? What's the SGR for? It is a growth rate. We are going to try to forecast earnings per share for 2013, next year. We're gonna use two fundamentals. Sales and earnings. And we have to forecast sales and earnings on a per-share basis for 2013, next year. Once we forecast earnings per share for 2013 and sales per share for 2013, we'll then go back and look at the multiples. What have, what have investors been paying in terms of multiples? Price to sales and price to earnings. We'll find an average multiple. And we'll multiply the average multiple by the average, by the earnings per share forecast and the sales per share forecast. And we'll come up with stock price, okay? So the SGR applies to net income. And so, it is a growth rate. The sustainable growth rate. We're gonna find two growth rates in order to find earnings per share. One is the SGR and the other is CAGR, compound annual growth rate. That's what we're doing. So remember that next year's estimate is equal to last year's number times 1 plus the growth rate. And what are we trying to do right now? Find the growth rate. And growth rate is equal to CAGR or SGR. So we're trying to find the growth rate, okay? So let's, let's do CAGR. I mean, let's do SGR, excuse me. Alright, let me check, make sure this thing's going. If I can turn it this way. Yes, so it looks like we're moving along. So let's find the retention ratio. And so, we have point 8 minus point 24. What's point 24? Dividends. So what's point 8? Point 8 is earnings per share minus dividends per share divided by earnings per share. And what is our retention rate or ratio for this year? And so, it's point 8 minus point 24 equal divided by point 8. And our retention ratio is 70%. So we're gonna retain 70%. Okay? Now, let's find return on equity. What is return on equity? It is net income divided by average equity. Okay, and what is equity? That's stockholder's equity. It's, let's just call it owner's equity. Where do we find that? On the balance sheet. So let's take our net income. And I tell you what, we're gonna make it really easy. We're not even gonna find average equity. Let's just use ending owner's equity. So let's find our net income, 64, 117 divided by, now let's find our owner's equity. Where is that? Over on the balance sheet. We're not even gonna average it. We'll just use total equity. Let's move this over so you can see it. There you go. So there's total equity right here. Okay, this is total owner's equity. So 64, 117 divided by 647, 368. Net income divided by equity. This is how much we generate, this is how much we have invested. So let's find that number. 64, 117 divided by 647, 368 is equal to 9.9%. Alright, so 9.9%. Let's scroll back over, put this in the right spot here. So we have 9.9%. Okay? So now, let's find the SGR. And the SGR is the retention rate times return on equity divided by 1 minus the retention rate times return on equity. Okay? The SGR, it's a growth rate for net income. Alright, so let's find this. So erase this formula here. And so, we've got retention rate, point 7 times point 099. Retention rate times return on equity divided by, and let's, let's find that one. Point 7 times point 099 is point 069. Divided by 1 minus point 069. So 1, let's reset that, add it to 1, and that's point 93. Minus point 93. So point 069, which is the retention ratio times, times return on equity, divided by 1 minus that. So point 069 divided by point 93 is equal to point 0645. So let's erase that. And we get 6.45%. What is that? It's a growth rate. A growth rate of what? Net income. Alright, we're gonna skip the average of SGR. And we'll just use 6.45%. Okay? So, um, let's scroll down, a little too far here. Alright, so now, um, let's find, let's CAGR net income. Let's CAGR net income. That's the next thing on the list. It's gonna be hard to, um, I'm gonna, let's see. EPS 2012, let me write some things down. 2012 EPS, point 8, okay? And point 74, we'll move this over here for some future calculations we're gonna need. And then, the SGR is 6.45%. That's what we'll need. And let's find CAGR of net income. So let's go ahead and get rid of all this. Alright, and what we're gonna work on now is, is this number right here. CAGR of net income. Let's CAGR net income. How are we gonna CAGR net income? Well, let's move this cursor so you can see the formula. Ending value divided by beginning value raised to the 1 over N minus 1. That's CAGR, alright? So, let's go up to find our net income. So we've got ending net income, 64, 117, okay? So let's put that in there. 64, 117, okay? Divided by, let's find our beginning net income of 59072. Okay? Raised to the 1 over N. And we've got three years, 1, 2, 3, minus 1. So that'd be raised to the 1 over 2 minus 1. So let's find the CAGR. 64, 117 divided by 59072 equals YX2, 1 over X equals minus 1. So let's do that, let's find this number. 64, 117 divided by 59072 equals YX2, 1 over X equals minus 1. And we come up with 4.18%. Okay? So, CAGR of net income, 4.18%. Alright, and we have our SGR is 6.45%. So now, we find the average of the SGR and the CAGR. So this plus this divided by 2. So we have 4.18 plus 6.45 equals divided by 2 equals 5.32%. What is that? That is the average of two growth rates, okay? For net income. So we're saying that net income grew an average of 5.3% over the last couple of years. And that's gonna be our growth rate to forecast net income. So let's forecast net income. So, the average of SGR and CAGR, 5.32%. So let's save that. Average of CAGR and SGR, 5.32%. Okay? Now, let's forecast, let's use that number to forecast earnings per share. So, 5.32% plus 1, 1 plus the growth rate times last year's number of point 8. So, 1.0532 times point 8 is equal to point 84. Okay? So 2013 estimated EPS, point 84. There you have it. Okay? Let's scroll down. So that's our fundamental. Alright, now, let's find our sales per share. Let's erase this. So we've got one fundamental. Our earnings per share, 84 cents. That's what we're expecting. Now, let's find sales per share, okay? And then we'll CAGR sales per share. So sales per share is sales divided by the number of shares. Simple and straightforward, sales divided by the number of shares. Alright, so let's find sales per share in 2012. Divided by the number of shares, 79,000. And let's find sales per share. 936, 036 divided by 79,000 is $11.85. Okay? $11.85, sales per share in 2012. Okay? Now, let's find sales per share in 2011. Scroll back up. Sales, 866, 199. 866, 199 divided by 80,000 shares. Let's find sales per share. 866, 199 divided by 80,000. And we get $10.83. Sales per share in 2011, $10.83. Sales divided by the number of shares. $10.83. Now let's find sales per share in 2010. And that would be 730, 709. 730, 709 divided by 82,000 shares. Uh, did I get this one right? Let's see the number above. Hold on a minute. Did I get the 80,000, 81,000? Let's make sure, let me make sure I got, so 866, 199 divided by 81,000. Yeah, 81,000. So that's $10.69. Let me make sure I get, so 866, let's clear that out. 866, 199 divided by 81,000 shares. Yeah, that's 10, that should be $10.69. Okay, now we have 730, 709 divided by 82,000. And we got $8.91. $8.91. Let's, uh, let me scroll down here so you can see that. See there? $8.91. So, let's go down to, there we go. Let's make sure, let's lift this up. 10.69. And this is $8.91. Okay? So there we go, let's put this down. So we have 11.85, 10.69, and 8.91. Sales per share. Alright, let's find the CAGR sales per share. So that would be 11.85 divided by 8.91 raised to the 1 over 2 minus 1. So let's do that calculation. Clear this calculator out. 11.85 divided by 8.91 equals YX2, 1 over X equals minus 1 equals 15.32%. Okay? So let's find sales per share, our estimate. So we'll add 1 to this, plus 1. That would be 1.1532 times 11.85, last year's number. So, plus 1 equals times 11.85 equals $13.67. So we've gotten our two estimated fundamentals that we're gonna use to value this company. Earnings per share, sales per share. So 1367. Let's go ahead and erase this. Yeah, so, uh, let's see. We'll write this down. 2013 estimated sales per share is 1367. Okay? Whoops, this is the way it's supposed to look. Let's get that right. Ah, doesn't wanna do it for me. Well, let's write it down here. This is 15.32%. That's the growth rate. So we've got our sales per share and our earnings per share. Now, what we're gonna do is the multiples. We're gonna do the multiples. Let's erase this. And we're looking at our multiples. Let's scroll down to get it out of the glare there. Alright, so now we're gonna look at, um, oh, here we are. We're gonna do price to sales, okay? So, what is the P? It's the stock price. And what is the S? It's sales per share. Alright, so we need the stock price. And we've got the stock price up here. There we go. So the stock price is, let's write it down so we don't forget. 1650, let's go ahead and put it up here. 1650 and 1850 and $20. Okay? And now we need the sales per share. And, uh, the sales per share, let me write that down. Yes, 1185, whoops, 1185, 10.69, and 8.91. So let's go ahead and draw a line here, a line there, a line here. And then let's scroll up a little bit so you can see what box this goes in. Let's see if I can get this done. Price to sales, right there. Price to sales. Alright, so, stock price divided by sales per share, stock price divided by sales per share, stock price divided by sales per share. And this is 2012, 2011, 2010, okay? So 16.5 divided by 11.85 is 1.39. That's sales per share. I mean, uh, price to sales. For every dollar in sales, people have been willing to pay a dollar 39. So 18 point, let's see, 18.5 divided by 10.69 is 1.73. And then 20 divided by 8.91 is 2.24. So there, there, and there. Alright, now let's find the average price to sales. So 1.39 plus 1.73 plus 2.24 divided by 3. So let's do that. 1.39 plus 1.73 plus 2.24 equals divided by 3 is 1.79. So average price to sales is 1.79. Let's see if we can get this thing to move a little bit so we can fill it in right. Average price to sales, 1.79. So this is 1.39, 1.73, and 2.24. Alright, now let's find the price to earnings. So let's look at that. So, let me write this down. The average price to sales is 1.79. So we're gonna use that. Now let's find the average PE. So, the price to earnings, let's scroll up just a little bit. Yeah. Price to earnings per share. So that's 1650 divided by point 8 and 1850 divided by point 74. And $20, that's those who stock prices divided by point 72. Okay? Alright, so, 16.5 divided by point 8 is equal to, whoops, let's clear this out. 16.5 divided by point 8 is 20.63. And 18.5 divided by point 74 is equal to 25. And 20 divided by point 72 is equal to 27.78. Alright, let's find our average PE. 20.63 plus 25 plus 27.78. Let's, let's just double check that. That's right. Alright. So 20.63 plus 25 equals plus 27.78 equals divided by 3, 24.48. That is our average PE. Okay? So, we have our, um, av, so we have our average PE and our average price to sales. Okay? And so let's write this down. The average PE is 24.48. Alright? So let's erase this here. Let's scroll up a little bit. Yeah, we're getting to the bottom of this. Alright, so using price to sales, let's scroll down a little bit, get it out of the light. Okay? So using price to sales, our average, uh, so our estimated sales number, uh, sales per share, $13.67. That's our estimated sales per share times our average, uh, price to sales ratio of 1.79. So 13.67 times 1.79 is equal to $24.47. That is our price based on price to sales. Now we're going to find our price based on, uh, price to earnings. So the average, uh, PE, or the, or the earnings per share estimate is .85. Let's see, where's that number? Uh, I'm not seeing it. I know I wrote that down. It's .85. .85. Alright. .85 times our average PE of 24.48. So 24.48 times .85, and we get a price of $20.80. So using price to sales, and sales have been growing nicely, 15% a year. So you would expect the price to be higher because sales are growing faster than earnings. So using price to sales and our estimated, uh, sales per share, we come up with a price of 24.47. Using earnings per share and our, so our forecast earnings per share of 85 cents times our average multiple, and we come up with a price of $20.80. Okay? So those are our two prices. Now, let's make an adjustment for, um, growth rate. We're going to ignore price to sales and just focus on PE. Okay? So, let's assume now that gr, that growth of earnings per share will be 7%. So, um, our growth rate's going up. The growth rate that we calculated using, uh, CAGR of net income and SGR was 6.1%. Let's see. No, 5.32%, I'm sorry. It was 5.32%. That was our average. So, first of all, let's calculate earnings per share. Earnings per share, the estimate for 2013 is 80 cents from last year times 1.07, our new growth rate. So .8 times 1.07 is equal to .86. Okay? So it's going to be a little bit higher this year. Instead of 1.0, uh, 1.053, it's going to be 1.07. So 86 cents instead of 85 cents. Alright? So what is the change in the growth rate versus the historical growth rate? So the new growth rate, .07 divided. Alright, let's finish up this study session by incorporating the, the impact that a change in growth rate will have on the multiple. And also remember that a change in growth rate will impact the multiple and the fundamental. And then we'll look at how the change in interest rates will affect the multiple. The change in interest rates will affect the multiple but not the fundamental. So let's incorporate changes in the growth rate of earnings per share and the growth rate, uh, and the changes in interest rates. Alright, so, we computed, uh, a growth rate, uh, for earnings per share. I think it was 5.16%. I believe, I believe that's what we computed. Somewhere, somewhere in that range of 5.16%. Okay? So now what I'm telling you is that earnings growth will be 7%. Okay? And so there's a change. And so the first thing we're going to do with this change in, uh, earnings, uh, per share growth rate is calculate, uh, new earnings per share. So let's get the calculator going, and look at that, let's look at that calculation. Alright, so, what will earnings per share be in 2013? And so, earnings per share in 2012 was 80 cents. Okay? And we're going to multiply that by 1 plus the new growth rate. Okay? And we'll get our new earnings per share estimate. So 1 point, well, let's clear this out. So .8, which was, uh, 2012 earnings per share, times 1.07, our new growth rate, is 86 cents. We're going to round up. .86. There you have it. There's our new earnings per share estimate for 2013. Alright? Now, let's compute the change in the growth rate. Okay? So we've got the new growth rate of 7% divided by the old growth rate, and forgive me if I'm off a little bit, 5.16%. I believe that was what it was. And so, 7 divided by 5.16. You know what? I don't think it was 5.16. I think it was a 32%. Hold on one second. 7 divided by 1.32. 7 divided by .68. 7 divided by 1.32. It was 32%. It's 5.3. It's our calls, 5.3. Yeah, that's it. 5.31, I think, is what I'll, what we had computed. Let's get this going here. 5.32% I think was the average growth rate of, the average of CAGR and SGR. Alright, so let's find the percentage change in, uh, the growth rate. And so, 7 divided by 5.32. It is, um, minus 1 is 31.5%. Close enough. 31.5% is the change in the new growth rate over the old growth rate. So let's, so let's erase this and put this right here. .315 or 31.5%. Okay? So the new growth rate is 31.5% faster than the old growth rate. So let's, let's multiply that 31.5% by the, oh, the starting multiple of 24.46. That's our starting multiple. That's the multiple we had. 24.46, the PE ratio, times .315, and we get 7.7. Okay? So, uh, this is the impact, right here, of the increase in the growth rate. Okay? Now, let's find the, let's find the impact from an increase in interest rates. So same calculation. We're going to take 6 divided by 5.5, um, then minus 1. And we get 9.09. 9.09%. So interest rates are going up 9.09%. That means the multiple's going to go down 9.09%. Okay? Make sure this is wrong. Alright. Talking to myself. You get old, you talk to yourself. Alright. So let's multiply the 9.09% times the beginning multiple, 24.46, to see the impact, the incremental impact on the multiple. So, times 24.46, and we get 2.22. So the multiple is going to go down 2.22 points. Okay? So let's net it out. The increase in the multiple from the increase in growth rate, the decrease in the multiple from the increase in interest rates. And so we have 7.7 minus 2.2 is 5.5. Okay? Now, let's adjust our PE. We'll add the 5.5 incremental change to the 24.46. And we get a new PE of 29.96. Okay? Now let's multiply our new PE of 29.96 by our new earnings per share of 86 cents. And we get a stock price of $25.77. That's our new estimated stock price. Given the historic data that we've had, the fundamentals that we forecast, the multiples that we observed, and we have, uh, we start with the new growth rate of 7%. 86 cents is our earnings per share, and the multiple, uh, growth goes up 30, roughly 32%, which is 7.7 multiple points. Interest rates going up 9%, which causes the multiple to go down a little over 2 multiple points. So the net difference in the multiple is 5.5 multiple points. We add that to the starting multiple of 24.46. We get our ending multiple of 29.96. We multiply that by our new earnings per share estimate, and we come up with an estimated price of $25.77. Okay? So, uh, that's the entire exercise, and I hope, uh, that, uh, this has been helpful to you. I hope this will help you, uh, prepare for the exam. I, I hope it clarifies for you, uh, how we go about in business deriving a value for a stock or for a business using the multiple approach. It's all about grabbing those financial statements, finding those fundamentals that we're buying, sales, cash flow, earnings, book value. Finding the growth rates of those historical fundamentals, and then forecasting forward, projecting forward, so that we know what to expect in the year ahead. All investments are made based on the future. So we forecast out a year, or 2, or 3 forward, our fundamentals. And then we observe in the marketplace using, uh, stock prices, what people have been paying for stocks divided by the fundamental per share, and we get the multiples. So the market gives us the multiples, and we're going to use those multiples along with our forecast fundamentals, and that will help us determine a fair price. And of course, this is a very uncertain exercise in real life. And if you come up with a price like this, $25.77, um, the, uh, it ends up really realistically being a range of, say, 21 or $22 up to $28 or $29 is the true range of real value. And you really don't know the real value until you get 3 or 4 or 5 years down the road, and you can, and you experience, you have the actual results that confirm whether your, whether your forecast was correct. So I don't want you to get the sense that this is an exact science. It is not. Business is full of risk and uncertainty, but there are standard techniques that we use, and this is a standard approach. Alright, that's enough of me yakking. Uh, y'all, uh, get to work studying, and we'll see you in the exam. Good luck. Until then, I'm Dr. E. Peace out.